Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting today. Lee, would you lead us in a roll call, please?
Thank you. Commissioner Vedelos.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Vice Chair Gordon.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Present.
Commissioner Cooper.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Thank you. I'm going to pick someone who's actually here to lead the salute to the flag this time. Commissioner Evans, do you do the honors?
Yes. Pleasure to be here. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That works much better. First, on administrative business, we have the minutes from the November 17th.
So, Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
The agenda?
Approval of the order of the agenda, please. Do I have a motion for the order of agenda?
Make a motion to approve the order of agenda?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. All vote? The order of agenda is approved. Next, have the November 17th minutes for approval. Is there a motion regarding this? Commissioner Vedelos.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Evans.
Seconded, Ed.
Thank you. The -- they are approved with the exemption of Gordon. Commissioner Gordon says he was not here. Next, designation of liaison to city council meeting.
No need for liaison for the next council meeting?
Is the next council meeting on the matter that's on the agenda today? Or does it include the?
Actually, it's not. Mr. Chair, it's not at the next city council meeting. It's at the February 26th city council meeting.
Got it. Great. Thank you. As there are no consent items, let's move on to public hearings. This is a text amendment, TA-103-15, initiated by the City of Pacifica to amend Article 26 of Chapter 24 of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code, Public Utilities Residential and Commercial Antennas, Regulating Wireless Communication Facilities. Recommended SEQA status exempt. Proposed action: Initiate amendment and recommend city council approval. First, may we have the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair and honorable members of the Commission. Christian Murdock, Assistant Planner. And let me correct one statement I just made. It's scheduled for the February 23rd city council meeting for a public hearing, not February 26th. I misspoke.
Got it.
You have before you this evening a text amendment that will affect Article 26 of our zoning code, regulating wireless communications facilities. This applies to private property as well as public rights of way. However, traditionally, most wireless facilities located on private property and not in the public right-of-way, and as a result, our zoning standards were a little bit light in terms of specific standards that will help wireless communications providers determine how they need to site their facilities and allow city staff to properly regulate them. Wireless facilities in the rights-of-way, whether they be private or public, were always subject to a conditional use authorization for the traditional cell site that you're used to with the large antennas and equipment. But what wasn't clear is whether there were setbacks, and if so, how would we apply them? As you know, the rights-of-way are more continuous. They're not as discreet as parcels, like residential parcel or a commercial parcel. And as a result, implementing setbacks such as 50 feet from the front or side property line, it's impossible to do that in the public rights-of-way. So, as a result of some interest from a carrier in locating sites in Pacifica, staff reviewed the zoning ordinance and determined that it was inadequate to efficiently process these items. If we were to take them forward without amending the zoning code, we would have to process a variance in almost every instance because they wouldn't comply with the prescribed setbacks, or how would we calculate them? And it would require special commission attention in addition to processing the use permit. So, we didn't think that was a particularly efficient process for staff, for the commission, or for the applicants, who really didn't have any guidance in terms of how to design their sites to comply with our zoning code. So, as a result, we brought you forth a new subsection in Article 26 that creates new development standards. Of note, one of them is an 18-inch setback from the front of the curb. We have height standards specified. We have maximum vertical and horizontal projections for new masts on utility poles, whether they be new or new -- excuse me, whether they be existing utility poles or light poles, or new poles instructed in the right-of-way. So, we think this will help provide clarity for applicants and provide a set of clear standards for the commission to review and for staff to make recommendations upon. Another item of note is we created a new definition of building profile, and the intent of that was to take residential structures where there is an adjacent proposed wireless facility and to ensure that we weren't locating or designating as eligible locations to locate those areas directly in front of residential structures, or for corner lots directly to the side of the structure. So, we thought that it was important to make that development standard in order to minimize visual obtrusiveness and clutter directly in front of residences. However, there's a provision in that standard that allows the commission to locate a site there if they feel and make a specific finding that it's the most aesthetically pleasing design. So, there may be rare exceptions, but that will require a specific action of the commission, and it's strongly discouraging applicants from proposing sites in those most sensitive locations. So, beyond that, there's two items procedurally that we need from the commission tonight. Our municipal code requires that the commission act to initiate the amendment and also to make a recommendation to city council. Traditionally, those might be done separately. The commission might say, hey, we have a problem with an ordinance or our standard. Let's initiate an amendment. Staff come back once you've analyzed it. In this case, we're taking care of them both at the same time. So, it's important that our motion, if we get to that point, includes both of those, as noted in the recommended action. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the commission or the public might have. Thank you.
Great. Any questions from commissioners? I already see that Commissioner Campbell is hot to trot. So, go ahead.
Wow. I better make this good. For the rights-of-way, does that include rights-of-way and the city parks?
Typically, those would not be considered rights-of-way. Those would be public property, which is a distinction that we're drawing. So, those would be regulated under the standard parcel development standards that we already have with the greater setbacks and so forth.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
All right. I had four questions. The first one was that how many permits do we expect to be issuing here in the next year? I mean, I haven't seen any variances come across through the Planning Commission, so I was kind of curious of what you were expecting.
Sure. So, we haven't received any applications yet. We've met with a carrier that's seeking to locate, I believe, 10 or 11 sites, and so you could expect to see that many applications within the next year, foreseeably. In terms of other carriers coming in, we can't speculate. There is another ongoing action that this ordinance amendment would make reference to, if you noticed, regarding exemptions under new FCC standards. Those go into effect over the next couple of months, and so for any existing facility that's already received a zoning approval, colocations will be much easier and much quicker for carriers, and so there may be an uptick in applications related to that. But those, in most cases, wouldn't come to the commission because of the colocation parameters.
The second question is that, you know, when we had that cell tower for AT&amp;T, it was very difficult for us to really make any recommendation on it because we were so restricted by what we could actually say about the site, whether or not we liked the site aesthetics. It's very restricted by the FCC policy. Do these fall underneath the same type of regulation from the FCC?
I'm not familiar with that AT&amp;T application that you're referring to, but there's a big distinction under the federal law and under the federal rules from the FCC. For new installations where there was no previous zoning approval, the local government maintains significant control in terms of siting, aesthetics, so forth. The FCC's new rules primarily apply to colocations where a city has already granted a zoning approval, whether by the commission or through the zoning administrator with the planning director. For those sites that have already been deemed suitable, they've already cited a pole and equipment, the FCC has determined that local governments were taking too long in reviewing the applications to add additional sites, additional carriers. And so, those are on the streamlined 60-day review clock. As far as new installations that require planning or staff administrator review, those will stay on a 150-day review timeline. So, I hope that answers your question. It's a little nuanced in terms of what review process will apply to which site.
And then, on these sites, I would assume that the residents, the adjacent residents still have the opportunity to come forward should they want to protest in regards to this, even if they do meet the setbacks?
Sure. So, the level of review that we're proposing for these new installations in rights-of-way, and new meaning there's no existing wireless facility with a zoning approval at that site, whether it's an existing utility pole or a new pole being proposed in the right-of-way, all of those require a use permit, as we've proposed in this process, which means it'll come to the Planning Commission unless the planning director determines it's appropriate for administrative level or zoning administrator use permit. But in most cases, they'll come to the Planning Commission. The public will have an opportunity to come in at a public hearing, provide their input. The commission will be able to add conditions related to aesthetics, height, things of that sort. The main thing that you're not allowed to regulate at the local level, of course, is the emissions. So, provided the applicant demonstrates to the commission satisfaction that it's compliant with FCC emissions regulations, that's the only area where you won't be able to add additional conditions or requirements.
Okay. The other question I had was that I was looking at some other city ordinances in other cities around us, and they do charge an application fee for this as well as a renewal fee. And it seems to me that if we're spending a lot of the Planning Commission, not Planning Commission, but your guys' time at the downtown office, that we should be charging a fee application for this annual review. I mean, I think it was every two years, or I forgot what the actual provisions were. Is that something that we add here, or is that something that goes in the ordinance? Or how do we facilitate that?
I mean, that's a great point. It's something that I didn't, I don't think that we believed it would be too burdensome in terms of staff time, but we should absolutely look at recovering our costs for that, for reviewing and verifying. So, it's something we can talk to the city attorney about adding a fee provision specifically for those biennial certifications.
How would that affect our, if we approve that, this tonight, how would that affect the approval process? Is that something that they could add at the city?
Well, I think you would change the motion to make a recommendation to determine an appropriate fee provision with the city attorney, and just add that on and make that part of your recommendation. We would revise the draft ordinance that would go to city council in light of that recommendation, and we'd work with the city attorney to craft the exact language, if it's legal and feasible for us to do it.
Okay. And then, how does this compare to other cities as far as this ordinance is concerned? I mean, I do have seen the other cities. I've seen some other provisions, and, you know, it's not being a planner, I look at it and I go, well, I see a lot of similarities amongst ours, amongst others. But what are the setbacks in other cities? Is this pretty similar to what other countries are doing, or?
It's specific to rights-of-way. I haven't come across a lot of ordinances that get very specific in terms of setbacks because of the unique nature. Other cities generally with their wireless ordinances tend to have a lot more prescription in terms of what they want to see, in terms of steffing, height, setbacks, and so forth. It's something that we could do here. It was a question of time and resources in this case. We didn't seek to do a comprehensive update, despite the fact that this ordinance was adopted in 1997, I believe.
Right.
1996. There are a lot of best practices that we could incorporate into a comprehensive update. That was not the scope of this proposal. We needed to get something on the books quickly and efficiently to adequately address these applications we were anticipating, and so we didn't seek to do anything greater, like you might see in other cities with more.
So, if we come across, let's say, you know, someone's really interested in this, we could obviously amend this and put some more restrictions on it, should it be necessary?
Absolutely. We can continue to tweak it as we feel that we are in this case. We could do a comprehensive repeal and replacement. Ultimately, it's up to the city council, but like I stated earlier, the commission can initiate an amendment anytime it feels the need to do so, and we would take that to the city council and let them be the final decision-maker.
Great. Thanks. All sorts of questions ahead.
Great. Thank you. Good question. So, I just wanted to repeat that noticing requirements still apply, so that this doesn't change anybody's ability to impact something that's happening near their home or et cetera. And two, I really do like that question regarding benchmarking against other cities. I understand the importance of getting something a little more current than 1997 on the books, but always, you know, benchmarking with other cities is something that I think is a valuable context to provide to the commission when making these decisions. So, thank you for doing those. Commissioner Campbell, I see, well, before we go back to you, why don't we go to Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. Just more for clarification. I noticed in the general plan consistency states that this new ordinance, there's no proposal to allow development in locations not already permissible in general plan. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that was, I just wanted for everybody's thought on that, so. And I think that's it for right now. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Vedelos.
One of the members of the public sent a letter regarding the tree-type poles, and I can see in certain circumstances where monopoles would be the best, but also in certain circumstances where the trees would be the best. It doesn't hide anything, but it looks a little bit better aesthetically in certain locations. So, could we either add the trees, or just, is that just too general of an item?
Well, here, that's a great point in terms of steffing, whether it's a tree or a slimline pole, or a windmill, or whatever the case may be. You see the whole gamut in other jurisdictions. My personal take on it is this ordinance amendment would give you full authority to implement any of those that are most appropriate for the context. One critique I have of other jurisdictions where they are much more prescriptive is that it then can limit the commission's discretion in terms of what's appropriate for this location that's in front of us. And so, there's nothing in this that would limit you from saying, we want you to come back with a proposal that is a fake pine tree, or something else that's appropriate for that location. So, you have full discretion in terms of aesthetics with this.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I kind of wanted to follow up on that because if the requirement, if there's something in the code that talks about as a best management practice or something like that, that the camouflaging or the steffing of the poles is, you know, seen as part of the maximum thing they need to do, doesn't that give the commission a little bit more oomph when it suggests that the applicant does that? Because if we don't have something like that in there and then we suggest it and the applicant says it's just too burdensome, we don't have a lot of power, I guess, or authority to insist on it.
We can certainly look at adding one or more references to steffing in the draft ordinance if the commission would feel more comfortable, or that would give them more authority. Ultimately, you do have the full discretion in terms of what the commission will approve. Whether you feel comfortable exercising that discretion without an explicit provision or recommendation in the code is another question and a valid one. So, we can look at that if you'd like to make that part of any motion to recommend approval to the city council, and we can revisit that aspect of the ordinance as well.
That's a good question. I mean, I'm wondering if we send it back to city council with these suggestions, or do we tell, ask you to revise them and then have you come back to us, and then we send it to city council with those revisions in place?
It's entirely up to the commission. The reason that I would request that you allow staff to craft appropriate language and keep this moving forward is the time sensitivity of this item. It's not urgent, but it is important that we get something on the books in case we do receive an application in the short term. In order, if we were to come back to the commission again for review of that language, which we absolutely could, it would then probably have a ripple effect of another four to six weeks before we could take it to city council. We've already had to continue the public hearing at city council once, for lack of a quorum here, when we first brought the item for review. So, we'd prefer not to lose an additional four to six weeks if we could avoid it, but we certainly want the commission to feel comfortable in its recommendation, so.
And just one more follow-up. I just, can you explain the time sensitivity one more time?
Sure.
Why is this so time-sensitive?
Sure. Again, it's not urgent, but it's important that we get something relatively soon. Several months ago now, we received an inquiry from the carrier that's looking to locate in the right-of-way, and we want to make sure we have some definitive guidance to give them. When we met with them, we indicated, well, this isn't exactly adequate. You're going to need a variance. You're going to have to go as part of your use permit and make findings for why your site needs to be here, because there's no specific development standards that are appropriate. We want to give them the clarity that they need as an applicant for a discretionary permit, and that's why we'd like to get something on the books sooner rather than later.
I've got other questions, but I'll wait in case anyone else wants to take a turn.
Well, I don't see any more questions from commissioners at this point, and I was going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who's here to speak on this matter. No? Okay.
Mr. Chair, that might be an appropriate time to open and close the public hearing for the record.
Do you have more questions?
I had one more question.
Please.
Just the impact of the, the proposed amendment removes the, these projects that are exempt from SEQA, and I was wondering how that might impact our decision-making process up here.
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner. Removing projects that are, are you referring to the FCC exemption?
No, I'm referring to, in the project summary, number four.
Right. Okay. So, this is staff's assessment of the environmental impact of this ordinance amendment, and so this has no bearing on the types of projects that would come before you. This is simply describing the impact foreseen from making these text amendments, if that answers your question. Not sure that it does.
Yeah, no, I see. There's a, yeah, there's a difference in SEQA-exempt projects and projects that aren't exempt from the SEQA. You'd have to do more environmental analysis if you didn't have this provision, if you didn't exempt this from SEQA.
That would be correct. At a minimum, we'd have to do an initial study, and we'd have to figure out whether a, or, excuse me, a negative declaration is appropriate.
Right.
Or mitigated negative declaration, or an environmental impact report. All of those would take more work than an exemption, but we feel an exemption's appropriate, given that this will have no impact and no change in the environment. Any project that could stem from this amendment would come back for another discretionary review, at which point we would review that project's impact on the environment.
Right. And the reason I'm asking is just we've had several cell tower applications up here in the past where noise has been an issue, and the noise studies that have been performed with, under SEQA were valuable to the commission.
Sure. And nothing would change if there was a potential for a noise impact in a future project that was coming before the commission for a use permit. We could certainly include that as part of the environmental review if the commission feels it's important, or there's a potential noise impact from that site. But this would have no impact. This is not creating a blanket exemption for future projects if that was the concern.
Yeah.
This is strictly limited to this ordinance amendment and not any future pole construction, antenna construction, equipment installation, nothing of the sort. All of those would undergo their own environmental review.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I'd like to ask my fellow commissioners. I, you know, I'm running up some language here like I've done in the past, and I'd like to see what you guys think of it. The first one would be a provision which states, explore a fee provision for the submission and annual review of applications covered by this amendment. Is there any comment if we were to add that to the motion?
Please.
Matter of process.
I have no idea what the process is, so.
Yeah, so, the chair has to open and close the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then, at that point, it will come back to us, and we can all deliberate and entertain your excellent motion as, your excellent addendum, as well as Commissioner Campbell's.
Yeah, so, thank you. Seeing no other questions from commissioners and no one from the public to speak on this matter, I declare that this, the public hearing on text amendment 103-15 is closed, and now bring it back to the commission for discussion on, regarding the motion. Commissioner Cooper.
So, the first, I have two provisions. The first one, I just would like some feedback from my fellow commissioners on adding a condition on the bottom of the motion, which would be to explore a fee provision for the submission and annual review of applications covered by this amendment.
We are lit up. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. I'll put my two cents in. I believe that would be in line with what we've been doing about changing and updating the fee structure anyway. So, if, I don't want to be the first city to do this, but if this is already being done elsewhere, I don't see why we shouldn't be. It, it costs a lot to do business, and businesses realize that. So, maybe, I don't know. I agree with you, though.
Commissioner Gordon.
Two comments. One, as far as process goes, we're going to be a lot more efficient if we sort of put down all of the proposed amendments, and then each one of us goes and says, okay, I like the fee of, fee provision proposed by Coop. I like the suggested language regarding steffing proposed by Commissioner Campbell. Otherwise, it could be, it could take a while. So, actually, I'm going to go ahead and start that. So, I like, I really like Commissioner Cooper's suggestion on the fees, and I don't really care if we're the first city or not to do that. And I also like the idea proposed by Commissioner Campbell that we just have some language in there that says that, you know, a design objective is maximum steffing. And that's, those are the only two proposals that I know that are on the table. But otherwise, I'm in favor of the motion as stated, yes.
Are there any other amendments proposed? Okay.
I have a comment, but.
Yep. Go ahead.
Well, I think that's an excellent, I'd agree with Commissioner Cooper's suggestion. My preference would be that we have the planning department explore what would go into a, into this ordinance first, come back to us, and then have us approve it, then send it to the council, rather than it go to the council just as a blanket suggestion that they do something. That would be my only preference, but.
Okay. Thank you. I'll comment on those two amendments. I'm all for expense recapture, so thank you for making that suggestion and providing the language for that. I do have a bias for action and think that the movement that's happened, the edits that have happened in this amendment capture the majority of what we would want to happen without doing a full-blown benchmarking study, et cetera. So, I think it's a big step forward, and I would encourage folk, my fellow commissioners to think about, can we nudge the city council in the right direction with the amendment as proposed regarding making maximum steffing a design objective, and then follow up with subsequent amendments later, just so that we can sort of keep the cadence up. But I support it. I just lean towards, I think what we have makes a pretty big improvement as is, and I'm all for capturing those gains before moving on. Commissioner Cooper?
Yeah, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I thought that the way that we would do this would be that before it went to city council for approval, we still had the opportunity to add the fee provision, provided the legal counsel said it was okay to add it. Is that my understanding, or am I misunderstanding what the conversation was?
I apologize. I didn't catch the first part of what you said, but we have two options. We could add it with the commission's recommendation. You would entrust staff, like you do in many projects, to make a change to a resolution or a project before it goes to the city council, or you could bring it back for another hearing, the next opportunity being February 17.
So, if we were to change the language, rather than saying potentially explore, we could say, upon approval, the city attorney and planning department or planning director to add a fee provision for this submission of, right?
Yes, you could do either one.
Did you have language on the steffing?
The proposed that I would put in is, upon the approval of the city attorney and planning director, adding a provision for stealth and camouflage provisions as an objective for the design, as in the, I just said, add camouflage provision covered by this provision or covered by this amendment. So, it would read, upon approval of the city attorney and planning director to add a stealth and camouflage provision covered by this amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Vedelos?
I agree that staff can write these provisions and that we should go forward tonight and not have it come back to us yet again, since we already did delay this process.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Gordon?
I'm also in favor of just moving ahead. I think, just a point of clarification, in terms of the steffing language, that does need a city attorney approval. It's just the permit language. just the permit language. Is that right?
Well, we could consult and would consult with the city attorney on any change to the language in the ordinance. Now, whether you want to explicitly require city attorney approval, that's a nuanced question. Sometimes the city attorney will recommend against a particular phrasing of language in ordinance. Staff will insist that we, it thinks it's the best wording and move forward despite the legal warning. So it could bind us somewhat, but I don't think it's significant, given the limited nature of this.
In this, historically in this context, what we've done is simply let you guys know where, where we're headed, what we desire, and sort of let you guys write it up as best you think. In terms of the permit charge fee, would you actually research what's like, you know, because the city council is going to probably ask you, okay, what are you guys recommending, right? Would you sort of put it in the recommendation? Would you, I'm sorry, would you put it in the proposed amendment, whatever this is?
Right. I think what you're likely to see is a generic wording of, and staff shall set a, charge a fee set by city council for these biennial certifications. We have an hourly staff rate set by city council, and what you'd likely see is in the interim, the planning director would determine this will take one hour, two hours, what have you, and that would be our interim fee until the next update of the council fee schedule, at which time we would likely add this as a line item for the planning department.
So I'm fine with you guys working with the, you know, putting together some language based on both of those issues and then us moving forward. I'm good with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Chair. With all due respect to my co-commissioner Campbell, I agree with that.
That's my line.
But I also believe that, you know, we don't have to rush, but we've already held this up one meeting, which equals two weeks. We always seem to get, we, I say we as a group or as the department, hammered for taking forever, and we're trying to streamline things a little bit better. So I am in agreement about moving forward and letting staff go ahead with the changes and recommendations. So, and I already said, I thought the amount on the cost was needed, so that's my thoughts.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I'm also comfortable with staff coming up with the language and shepherding through this fee process. I was interested in seeing what that stealth language would be before I, you know, provided the approval, and I still don't see the screaming need to move forward based on one carrier's coming forward during the holidays to get this approved. It does seem a little, I just don't see the justification for it, but I'm not going to let it hold up the show.
Very well. Is there a motion? Commissioner Cooper?
All right, since I tend to write these down. I'll make a motion that the planning commission expresses intent to initiate an amendment to Article 26 of Chapter 4 of Title 9 of the Pacifica Municipal Code as set forth in Exhibit A, find that the proposed amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, recommended the city council approve of the proposed amendment and incorporate all documents and testimony into the record by reference. In addition, upon review and/or approval of the city attorney and planning director, add a reasonable fee provision for the submission and annual review of all applicants covered by this amendment. In addition, upon review and/or approval of the planning director, adding a provision for stealth and camouflage requirements covered by this amendment.
Is there a second? Commissioner Vadalas?
Second.
All vote? And that motion passes six in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next, as there are no other agenda items, we're onto the communications section. Are there any commission communications? Other than Happy New Year, I believe there aren't any, any more staff communications.
So staff, just wanted to remind the commission of the joint city council and planning commission study session scheduled for February the 23rd at 6:00 P.M.
And that is here?
Correct, in the council chambers here.
And the agenda is?
Kind of provided an update of what's been happening with the planning commission, so.
Great.
Projects, maybe future projects.
Excuse me, Chair. I just had a question for staff. The 17th you mentioned for the next meeting, isn't that holiday Monday?
That's the Tuesday. The holiday is on the 16th.
Oh, it's Tuesday, okay. I'm sorry. Yeah. I just wanted to remind that we do have a holiday up.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
My gosh, we're in February already. Okay. Next, oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on this agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. I ask that you fill in one of the little yellow cards, just so that we have a record of who you are. You can certainly drop that off afterwards.
I get to go?
Sure.
I got little pictures for you both.
Great.
My name is Dave Blackman. I've been here a resident since 68, and I've got about three projects that are slowly moving through the process. One that's about the house that's going about three years through the process, one that's.
I think you didn't need a, unheeding his mic to switch up on the dais.
On the mic. Yeah, switch that switch.
This switch?
Yeah.
Sorry, you'll have to start over again.
Try that again.
Will you guys start my time, too?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I've been a resident here since 68, and I've got several projects moving through the process. I've got one house that's in the permit process for three years now. Hopefully, I could do something this year. I've got one that's approaching a year, and another one that's just months in. I'm curious because I'm pretty frustrated. There's a property that is north of the Mobile Home Park with an address of 12 Sharon Way. 12 Sharon Way includes coastal cliffs, the beach, and the Pacific Ocean. A few years ago, it was navigating through the planning department hurdles to acquire a coast development permit, site development permit, and use permit by another developer. It even came before this planning commission, not specifically you guys, but this planning commission, for a study session, and at that point, it had a lot of issues about being too close to the coastal cliffs. As it was still navigating through, it ended up getting a full EIR, and Dan Murphy ran out of money. So now, fast forward to the present, there's a project that's being completed right now, right on the cliffs, that had no coastal development permits, no use permit, no site development permit, no CEQA review, nothing. It's really frustrating when you go through this process and the thousands of dollars and time I spend to these things end up. I've requested staff to show me if they had coastal development permits or if there were none issued. I asked in July, in writing. Last week, I got a letter saying that there were no permits for the first time. I got that because I appealed their decision. The planning department then said that since I didn't ask in a timely manner, which it took them six months to even respond to me, that I don't get to make my appeal. That's why you guys aren't seeing it, and that's why I'm here. They might have some rational reasons that they haven't explained, and I handed you a drawing. I handed you the reasons why it should have a coastal development permit. I'm not trying to cause the city any harm. I'm not trying to cause that developer any harm. I just would like some more fair play. And so I'm still struggling to get the appeal in front of you folks, and if planning staff, they heard their own appeal and said that you guys don't get to hear it, this has been about the fourth time in my career here that planning staff said the appeal cannot come forward on other things. There's been cases where other city staff have asked me to do improvements for other projects in the past. I've been up at this podium asking for help. With no help in the past, I ended up suing the city of Pacifica against everything I wanted to do, and the city spent $350,000 to defend a position, asking me to put a sewer in line for somebody else and lost. It's really frustrating. I don't know if this is just retribution to me. I've got about eight things going on with the city right now where they're just incredibly frustrating, just amazing things, and I'm going to be at the city council to speak about those. And I think everybody here generally does a good job. Most staff does a good job, but there are some aspects that are incredibly frustrating. Thank you.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anybody else to speak? Great. And please do, if you could just submit a card so that we've got on record your contact information, Mr. Blackman, that would be helpful. That brings us to the end of the agenda, so I'm looking for a motion regarding adjournment, unless there's a conversation regarding this amount, this oral communications. Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well.
Commissioner Campbell?
I don't want to discuss it, but I'd like to adjournize it. I've seen it developed myself, and I've had people come up to me and ask about it.
That is a fair action. In fact, we cannot discuss it because it's not on the agenda. Commissioner Cooper?
I just have the same question. Thank you for bringing it up.
Commissioner Gordon?
I was going to move to adjourn.
Commissioner Evans?
I just want to make sure if we could put it on the agenda also.
Great. Thank you. So staff, you've heard the request to put this item from the oral communications on a future agenda for discussion?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. And I, somewhere in there, I heard something about a motion to adjourn. So would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Campbell?
I will make that motion.
I think this is Commissioner Evans?
I'll second that.
All vote? And this meeting is adjourned. Anyone agreed by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.